And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have eleven items on the agenda this afternoon. Any changes before proceeding? Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, we have, uh, no one signed up to speak? Is our sign up sheet open? Anyone sign up to speak? Okay. Uh, so moving on to our discussion items. The last item regarding the Park Project, uh, there were some questions with the contractor regarding the Park Project we wanted to discuss this afternoon. So what we'll do is between item ten and eleven, take a short recess, we'll do our reports and anything else before that final discussion item, in case anybody wishes to leave before that final discussion. So with that, we'll move forward. And the first item is regarding, uh, Prime Judge Rick Rude.
I've got a, let me give you all a copy of the resolution. Give you a little bit of. If you vote, you know, when you gotta vote, you have to show your identification, show your driver's license, whatever it is. There was a bill passed this last session that allows for the use of electronic poll books. So basically the, you know, your driver's license has got a strip on the back of it. That strip has a lot of information. So there's technology now that the, the state of Alabama is allowed us to use. So when you gotta vote, you take your driver's license and you swipe it. And it will populate the screen with your information, will tell where you live, where you vote, uh, all that kinda stuff. You'll actually sign on a, on a, on a pad, on an iPad or something. Once the election's over with, when it's returned to the board of registrars, they can plug a cable into it and download all that information on their computers rather than going through. I don't know if you ever saw them doing it, they take a little scan gun, you go through there and they scan everybody that's voted. So it's just technology, um, it's not anything new. Georgia's been doing it for years, several states have been doing it for years. But, uh, what I wanted to ask you is, uh, they, they have the state, Secretary of State has got a, a project, and this is gonna allow a pilot program, if you will, for the November election. We have iPads, it's not gonna cost, let me say that first, it's not gonna cost you anything. We've already bought iPads that we send out to, uh, got most of the polling places covered so that, uh, if you show up to vote, rather than them trying to call the board of registrars, find out if you're registered, they can pull the book up on their iPad. So not sure, there's some different variations of if you use an iPad or if you use another system, uh, pros and cons of both of it. But we have the iPads, if that's what, um, the Secretary of State's gonna allow us to use. I have hava money that was, actually it was here before me, the federal government, from that money from the federal government for, uh, voting, uh, election supplies specifically and only. We've got some of that money left over, so if I need to buy something to go to complement that iPad to do this, that's well, that's what we'll do. If I need to buy another standalone poll book, that's what we'll do. I've got funds to do that. So it's not gonna cost you anything. But in order for us to participate, we need you all to pass this resolution. Okay, so it's not gonna cost you anything, it's gonna let us use it. It'd really be beneficial, um, rather than sign all these different books, you know, you, they print your name, you sign your name, you do all this other stuff. It, it's, it's, they had a, uh, they had a, a bender that had one at one of our conferences, uh, this year, and it was just, it was amazing. So what we wanna do, it'll make the, especially your bigger polling places, Scottsboro especially, it'll make that whole process a lot quicker. Not gonna make it fast, it's just gonna make it a lot quicker than it was. So if y'all don't care, as soon as y'all could, I know you can't vote on it now, but at your next meeting, if you can, we can get that return to the Secretary of State's office so we can be buying whatever we need to do so that we can, uh, participate in the pilot program in November.
Do you have a Word copy of this?
This is all they sent us. Well, I'll tell you what I'll do, uh, let me see, I think they did email it, if it is, we can forward it to you. And then you can do it from there, if that's okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other questions? If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday. Thank you.
Thank y'all, have a good day.
The next item is regarding, uh, my husband Rosalie, we received a request, and I believe, uh, Mr. Miller and Lynn Williams complain to utilize the company's funds to fund this protest, is that correct? So any comments or comments on that? If there's no objections, we'll place that on the agenda next week as well. Next item is regarding resignation letter and plans for public work positions. We received a letter of resignation from a employee, I believe that, um, today is the last day, is that correct? Uh, we did, we voted at our last meeting to make an exception to the rule so that we could, uh, utilize the previous, um, applicants for our position in the revenue office. I'd like us to consider next week when we, uh, get a resignation, to go ahead and approve a process for public works. Otherwise, we're gonna be put into a very long replacement period for the number of folks. My understanding, this position was HMT two, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we would promote within for the HMT two, from those lists of HMT ones, then of course, we'd have to go through the interview process for HMT one. We are currently in the process of interviewing for HMT one from another position that we lost, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to ask that the set of interviews that is scheduled, uh, to be scheduled or has been scheduled in the next week or two, that we utilize that to fill both of these HMT one positions, and that that HMT two position will be filled from within. So are there any questions or comments about that? If we can approve it all at one time, that'll allow them to move much quicker, uh, with their process of getting those folks replaced. Again, with the number of people we've had leaving recently, uh, it makes it very difficult. You know, again, it has to come to the commission, it has to be approved, and this will help speed that process up just a little bit. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there's no objection, then we'll, uh, have that on the agenda next Monday.
I want to add a comment, but it's okay. I'll, I'll just request that if, if one or both of the HMT one positions that are filled, if those are filled with temporary employees, I would like a consideration on, uh, starting to move temporary positions for those that were taken. If, if one or both are filled with temporary.
When we approve, uh, when we approve those positions, if they are filled with, at that time, prove whether we would, uh, continue with more time, sir. Any other questions or comments? Next item is regarding HVAC system. Uh, I think the last work session or meeting, we did discuss some of the changes that we were looking at. We didn't even have an initial meeting with the engineers to discuss things going forward. We've got one possible emergency situation, um, in the DA's office regarding the units up there, we've been trying to get those settled. Uh, but what you have today is regarding the chemicals, I just wanna give you update on this. We, uh, Mr. Waldrop, our maintenance director, has looked at this, and we can save roughly a hundred dollars a month by switching how we do our chemical service. So you have in your packet, say, uh, basically a quote from this company for doing our chemicals moving forward. So I would like to ask that we approve that next week. It's not a whole lot of money, but again, it's, you know, everywhere, we can save some money, uh, we need to make those efforts. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda next Monday.
Does that have anything to do with the leaks that we?
In looking at the, uh, you're talking about the cooling tower? Uh, that, we don't have any leaks at this time with cooling tower. There are some places that are rusted out, uh, but none of those places are where it's actually leaking out of the cooling tower. It's other places within, uh, within that system. Engineer, or that, that, uh, yeah, the engineer group that came in, they did look at it, and they wanted to look a little bit further at it before they could make a recommendation to us. Based on that, and seeing as how, right now, we don't have any leaks, uh, that are, where we're actually losing supply off of it. As long as everyone else is okay, we can wait till we get that engineer's report before we determine how to move forward. Any other questions? Uh, next item is regarding the park electrical, we had discussed in the past, uh, the rewiring of ADOC, and, uh, thank you, does everybody have a copy of that?
I think, I think we talked about this about last year sometime, about getting, uh, ADOC rewired 'cause we're having some problems down there. At that time, I'd asked to get some bids. I got, um, I'll tell you, just a couple, two bids, and, um, I think we decided to table it for a while. And then we decided to go ahead and redo it, and, um, I got back with two, uh, people that put their bids in to begin with, and told them that we were gonna try to get it done, and, um, see if they wanted to redo their bids, and, um, one bid, one bid. We got two bids, one was the same as it was the last time, and the other one was redone.
This is state, the quoted prices under the bid, bid law, this, these are quotes that have been given to us, so we didn't actually go through the bid process. We can pursue that if we want to, um, but this is what, it's, the quotes have been given in just asking, uh, to determine whether it needs to go through the bid process or not.
It being so close, I don't know.
I don't think we'll apply it to, it's below the fifty thousand.
Fifty?
It's below that, yes. Did you have a recommendation on which ones? We've talked about this for a while, we know that, uh, something needs to be done on this. I think with the park project going on, now would be the time to, to move forward with this. We wanted to discuss and see what we thought about.
I did, I did have conversations with both of them, I think that's what, uh, we found out there, of what's going to be done. And, um, I spoke to John Moses, he said that's the way it should've been done to begin with, and he said he would be inspecting as it goes. So he's, uh, he's the C, uh, electric inspector.
I just caution you, since it's as close to the fifty as it is, it, it has to be not more than. Because the problem you may run into is if, with that quote, if then they find something that needs to be added that's additional, and it gets over fifty, then you might stop and start over.
Same quotes, voided also, so we really don't got that quote.
Where is it going? Okay, got you. Well, he said he didn't wanna update it. I would assume he still hold his position, but.
And if I say neither one of them was, no, they're paid, so I got with them, and, you know, I can say one of them, one bid, one bid. He said he'd stay with this.
Any questions or comments?
When did you ask them to all redo the, uh, reduce it to a bid recently?
Well, it's about a month. Three weeks ago, a month ago, Mr. Hyatt, and he gave me time to talk about it. And, you know, they may get down there, and they may be, you know, like Mr. Ford said, I don't know, they may be something down there.
Let me ask, if we go into the process and move forward with this, and there's a change order for more than, that would take it over that, would we need to stop and then bid from that point on?
These can be done, though, for some of them.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't hurt to let them, because, you know, they asked me to come down, ask me everything I'm doing, so I'm gonna do this.
Before saying anything, I mean, they're pretty much stripping out this road.
Right. All you, all you, two services going in, they're stripping out all, all the old work, and putting in new work. And, and they're putting in two new four hundred amp panels on the dock, so they're putting two new cutoffs, that's a big, uh, short line. So everything going down in there is gonna be used. Now, it's possible we might reuse some of the meter bases, you know, it's just a meter base. Possibility might reuse some of the conduct. Everything in there is gonna be ripped out.
They're being so close to the threshold, it'll embarrass us, uh, in the view.
And, you know, you don't ever know what's gonna run in there.
If we choose to bid it out, um, of course, we need to get the specs down, but we can do that, we need to do that pretty quickly if we choose to go that route. Is that what we wanna do? We wanna discuss this and decide next week? But I mean, discuss whether we bid or whether we, yeah, what, you know, as I pointed out, we would need a contract on this one.
What specification, I mean, you'd have to get somebody direct specifications of it.
Right. If that's the consensus, if we can begin that process, if we can, if we can, if we can, if we're.
It's probably what needs to be done, but when you do this, and our prices are fixed, and there's more than we've got, of course. Make sure that we're aware of that. It's probably not, you know, one of these quotes even said, this is not real. So maybe that's gonna be more. Oh, I think, I may, I may not read that.
Well, I'd rather know what I'm spending than, okay, one of these, and it wound up being that.
It would be a contract at least.
Yeah, we'd have to cut the contract with everybody. Okay, we'll work this week then to get, uh, some specs together so that we can bid that out as soon as possible. Anything else?
You got some A minds for that specs?
Uh, we'll get together, I think we can find, I think we got the folks that might do it. Okay. Next item is agreement with the Jackson Penn School Board to build a building in New York City Mountain High School. This, um, agreement, in line with some of the previous agreements we've done. Any questions or comments at this time? Do you have any, has this been presented to the school board yet?
One sec.
Okay. In doing that, I, I don't know how we wanna proceed, if we want to, uh, we can proceed next week by approving this pending school board, uh, authorization, or we can wait until we hear back from them before we go on, how we wanna proceed. I'm not sure when their next, is it tomorrow, their next meeting? And then after that will be?
Must have a special meeting between them.
Okay, is tomorrow a meeting or work session?
Tomorrow's meeting, it's a work session, then work session four, I think, Monday meeting, four thirty.
Not sure if we can get the list to them tomorrow. We'll see what we can do to get that to them in midday or whatever. Tentatively, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night, if everybody's doing that. Okay, next item is related regarding equipment lease and salvage for public works.
Thank you, gentlemen. In a cursory review of identifying all of our equipment that needs to be replaced and set target dates and future replacement dates for all those pieces of equipment, we identified some cooler pieces that need to go now. So what you have in your packet is a replacement plan, um, it's actually a lease plan for five years for the identified pieces of equipment on there. The math that's on the sheet is an updated, an updated calculation from the email you received. And so the annual cost after the salvage value from existing pieces of equipment is the number highlighted at the bottom of the page. Second page in, in that attachment here are the, uh, northern counties in northern part of the state that participate in this cattle program. So it's a, uh, it would be at least for five years, and then likely auction, and, you know, depending on the hours on the equipment, could auction start over if it's still a low hour piece of equipment, it's a good working order. That'd be an option just to pursue the payoff and continue to use.
Questions or comments? Now that we discussed, uh, the last budget meeting, some information about the dollars on this, and I think we determined that we wanted to see about pursuing it, is that correct?
We said roughly there was about two hundred thousand and one hundred billion, well, that was available for equipment?
Hundred fifty per year, and we'd use this, we'd use most of all that for this year.
We have to wait till next year?
Next year, there'd be a hundred.
And one hundred?
Right.
Yeah, we had utilized all of the equipment funds from one hundred out of the cash balance that was there, correct?
Yeah, that's, you're within seven or eight thousand of that. Now, there's, you know, one eleven items for capital lease, capital interest as well. Also, I just kinda reiterate, you know, this is a bill lease, so instead of an upfront, large capital amount purchase, you're looking at six thousand dollars a month, basically, so.
And we could actually bank those auction prices for those balloons and cover that.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's kind of a rundown on the math. If you assume, if you assume that near six thousand dollar a month payment, uh, and then you add in the balloon payment, and then, that's, that's your total cost, and then you deduct your auction amounts that, that are anticipated at the end of that five years, and then you deduct the other amount, which is anticipated salvage value. That's a minimum salvage value, we have guarantees for that much. And, uh, you divide that over the five years of the lease. And you're kinda, at that dollar amount per year, the expected.
For all these pieces available?
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments?
Any time left, please?
Once approved, would we need a, uh, an agreement in place to approve this next week, an agreement with?
If it's approved, we can apply for approval with, uh, capital national for the lease term.
Okay, and all of this is, is qualified through either state bid or what else, uh, did, uh, entities?
Yes, sir, we would be utilizing our membership with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Lots, which I have a letter approved from the state authorities recognizing that lots that I can supply.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday. Okay, next item, surplus presentation department, Mr. Robinson.
This is, uh, just some old tars that we have, they're specialty sized tars, nineteen point fives, that don't fit nothing else that we have up there. There's two new ones and ten old ones, really not any good use except for capping. I like to surplus those tars out. They actually went on the little zoo zoo truck, the six yard satellite, and we've now sold that, so we have no use for those anymore.
What, uh, how do we, when we surplus these, what is, where do they go, or what do we do with them?
We just, uh, uh, actually, we sold that little truck, and then, and the person that purchased it was curious to if we had any, so I probably already got a buyer for him anyways.
Any questions or comments? If there's no objection, we'll place that on the agenda next week. Next item is regarding temporary employee presentation department, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, uh, I've been wanting to do this for a little while, but putting it all in competition through, we've been, uh, a little bit shorthanded due to, uh, to illness and, uh, then a retiree, and we did hire a guy to fill the retiree's position, but it's taking, you know, it takes him six to seven weeks or better just to run the routes. We've gotten kinda behind on a lot of stuff. I got a lot of cans around the place that needs to be roped down, stacked up, and ready to send to auto. Uh, we just got a lot of work around there that we're falling short on, and, uh, I'd like to request, if we could, one temporary to help out. I'd also use them in recycling. And two, when we have more than one person calling in, we're a little bit shorthanded, so I could utilize them in several different circles.
Will the temporarys be required to be CDL?
No, sir, not, 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 not different, wouldn't have to be.
Well, they'll be able to fill in for you.
They couldn't fill in, that's who.
Your vacation picture.
They couldn't fill in, but I could pull, put them on recycling, a more minor job, and put my CDL guy that knows the routes to drive the routes. So we could use them, utilize them in recycling, which would loosen up a guy with CDLs and stuff that could drive the routes. Right now, we're having, we're using two CDL drivers to go out and do recycling, where I could substitute one of them.
You don't need one for a can replacement either, do you, CDL? Or do you have to have a CDL?
We really need a full-time position, all of them need to be CDL.
But I mean, right now for this, could that never?
No, no, they could drive, they'd be driving a pickup with a trailer, so no CDLs are required for that.
I know, you know, we, in the past, uh, couple of years, or past year, we've added, of course, the roll-off service, recycling service, so, uh, we reduced some of our staff out there, and of course, there's definitely a need, uh, for that, at the budget.
It seems pretty good, we're a little bit over, we're alright. Roll-off business is growing every day, we got one, two, to three containers per day being moved, so each time we carry one out to a new area, we have more people to call. So it's, it's on the process of picking up and growing.
Question, your fellow? If there's no objection, we'll place that on the agenda, correct? Next item is regarding the sanitation shed, Jim.
Yes, this right here is, uh, we've talked about this a little bit. We're in the need of a, a shed for, to put our new equipment stuff, pick up clothes, trailer, just to, uh, put all of our equipment under. And, uh, the price is quoted right here, it's roughly about the price of the, what the building and having it erected, or putting it up, fabricating, would be. We're at the point now of where we kinda need an engineer, architect, to come out there, and it's gonna have to determine the top groundwork we may have to do for the foundation, whether it be piers, we got a concrete slab out there, we will put this on. We'll have to have an engineer at this point, and that will determine the price of how much this building is actually gonna cost us when we go, so. And on the back right there, you can get kind of a layout, uh, forty, forty by eighty, sixteen foot high.
Open on all horse sides?
Open on all horse sides, yes, sir. Just red.
Questions or comments on that? And when you looked at this, uh, was this gonna be something paid out of cash balance?
Yes, we'll have to, yes, sir.
Is this something that we have to get in drawing on, or?
Well, it's kind of a simple building, the main thing is, we use the chart that we got right here with the piers and stuff. It's mostly just to find out how much foundation work we've got to do. That would determine the price of what this building's really gonna cost. Would may come in under the bid law.
Should be a red iron building.
It's red iron, it's, it's.
It's just gold, it will come.
No, sir, it has to, it's been, so.
Okay, we need, we'll see what we need to do then to move forward with that, and, um, as soon as we have, uh, whatever agreement ready to go, we'll bring that to the commission appropriate. Okay, next item is regarding the park project. Before we move to that, like I said, I'd like to go through our reports, um, and, uh, then we can move on to that park, I can put this one, move on to that park project. So first, our fourth, Mr. Manning, you have a claim?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pointer?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes? Chief? Mr. Allen? Okay. Mr. Vivin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I've got just an announcement on some board appointments. We have, for the remaining of this year, we have some board appointments that'll come up. The Jackson County Personnel Board, we have, um, two positions on that, which, uh, uh, are up and need to be, uh, either replaced, replaced with those same individuals. DHR Board, we have one individual, uh, which is up this year. Jackson County Water Authority, we have a position up this year. The nine-one-one Board, we have two positions that are up. Uh, one has requested to be reappointed, we can move forward with that appointment at the next meeting if we choose to. Marshall Jackson. Marshall Jackson, uh, Mental Health Authority, we have one individual on that, and the Mountain Lakes Tourism Association, we have one on that as well. So everybody should have a copy of this in their packets if you'll review that. I'd like for this to be the official notice of announcement that these positions are available for these boards, again, the Jackson County Personnel Board, DHR, Jackson County Water Authority, nine-one-one, um, the Jack, Marshall Jackson Mental Health Authority, and that Mountain Lake Tourism Association. So those are the positions that are available and open. Okay, and that concludes those items, so we'll take a very quick recess and, uh, get back with the park project.
How long you think that's gonna last?
Park project?
Yeah.
Maybe thirty minutes, something.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty-four minutes.